Good evening, everybody. It is November 4th, and this is City Council meeting, City of Louisville, Colorado. Can we take a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Dickinson. Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Councilmember Bierman.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffner.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Okay. If you could join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next item on the agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. If you would like to make a public comment about one of those two categories of items, please fill out a card and hand it to the clerk at the end of the dais, and she will read your name when it's time to come up. If you do come up, make sure you state your name and where you're from. You don't have to say where you live, your address, but just what community you reside What, you get three minutes, and there'll be a timer. And if you want to pool your time with somebody else who is here or who's online, and the people online either can pool their time with somebody else online or somebody here, if they can get that person to agree, you can have up to six minutes. You do not have to speak for the full three minutes or to pool your time and speak for the full six, but come up and tell us what's on your mind if you like. All opinions are welcome. We ask that you not cheer or boo or clap, mostly because it's challenging sometimes to speak in front of a group of people, and we want to try to make it as welcoming as we can. Sometimes people are deterred if they believe somebody is going to be thinking that their position is unpopular or whatever. We want to make sure to get as broad a participation as we can. So with that in mind, do we have any requests or public comment?
No.
None? Okay. Anybody online? All right. I could have just. All right. Now, on the consent agenda, I'm going to actually split this because we have, I think, recusal. So what I'd like to do is first ask for a voice vote on item D.
Yeah, and I'll take this opportunity to recuse myself from voting on item D to do a conflict of interest.
While he's doing that, you actually have to...
I have to actually leave the room?
Leave the room. Yeah. It just means that for reasons that the council member has, and he's a lawyer, that does happen from time to time with lawyers, it happens from time to time with all of us that there's a conflict of interest, you end up having to state that and then go out of the room. He can't make faces at me, can't, you know, threaten me or anything like that, and that's a good thing. All right. So if we could, like, move to approve item D on the consent agenda.
I would, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Did you move?
I was moving, yeah.
If we could, okay.
Yeah.
Then second.
Okay. All in favor?
I'd like to speak on the matter.
Okay.
On the...
Go ahead, please.
Just to say that if you guys don't know what item D on the consent agenda is, it's the right-of-way for Campus Drive, and just really excited that we're going to get this right away. This is something that we've been wanting for a really long time, and it's really exciting. And that's all the comment I have.
All I would say is that's something that probably we've got a number of students from Monarch here tonight observing, and I hope they'll go back and tell folks that we're about to vote on this and that we're hopefully going to have a vote that'll be favorable. But let's, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Now we can bring... The next motion will be to approve items A, B, C, and E on the consent agenda, and I'll move for passage of those on consent. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is council informational comments and committee reports. Does anybody have a... Yes. Councilmember Fahy, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I wanted to just mention that I was at the Consortium of Cities meeting, which went very well. We're actually doing pretty good regarding the homeless situation in town compared to surrounding communities. But there was also a presentation that day by the Boulder Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council. And so I brought copies of their report. They put out a new report of what they're doing every five years, so I brought a copy for all of council. There's a couple extras, and if you go to BCAA, for Boulder County Area Agency on Aging, at bouldercounty.gov, you can log on and reference anything you'd like to hear out of this. The interesting thing for me was we're very involved with Boulder County Area Agency on Aging and with our senior center. They support us. We get money, federal money, through them to support our meal site program. They also bring people over to give talks on various topics, safety issues and health issues and things for the seniors. What has changed this year is that they're also, they're also putting together a domain focused on disaster preparedness. So, and that all came about because of the fires that we've been experiencing recently. And so it's interesting to read what they are proposing to do through the senior, the Area Agency on Aging regarding fire, but also all livability issues regarding seniors. And one of the big points that they make, just about every presentation they make, is that anything you put in place for senior citizens also impacts and assists other age groups, people with disabilities, young families. One of the things that was mentioned a couple of years ago here at council was lengthening the time for a crosswalk at certain intersections, and that was to give seniors time to cross, but it also gives people in a wheelchair or with some kind of walker or something a chance to walk across. And also, young families with kids pushing a stroller and then you've got a two-year-old walking alongside you, it takes a little bit longer. And so all of these things benefit other people, but I just want everybody to know that the Area Agency on Aging is partnering with us and every other aging area senior center in the county. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Fahy. Your protem.
Yeah, I just wanted to report, we had a retreat today for economic vitality. It was from 8:30 this morning until around 3 o'clock this afternoon, and we had an alphabet soup there. We had SB, DC, the LRC, the EVC, the DBA. The Small Business Development Center was there with some of their leaders, the Louisville Revitalization Commission that does a lot of work in our URA, the, another letters, the Economic Vitality Committee was represented there. The workforce of Boulder County was there. The Downtown Business Association was there, and both the Louisville Chamber and the Boulder Chamber were represented. So it was a lot of different people who are working on, you know, generally speaking, economic vitality throughout our communities. And this is the first of, hopefully, annual meetings with these groups to kind of just get on the same page and talk about what everyone's doing and what we're working on and what our similar goals are and where the holes are and just having a good conversation together and getting all the people in the same room. So it was, I thought, a really great event. It was well-attended, and we walked through lots of different things, talking about a lot of our wins in our various communities, and again, some of our struggles that we all share right now with the economy and other things going on. But I appreciate everyone who's able to attend. There were probably 30, 40 people in the room for most of the day. Maybe it was a little high, 30 people in the room for most of the day, and it was really well-run by our economic vitality manager, Vanessa Zarate and Austin Brown. They did a great job, so it was a wonderful event, just wanted to let everybody know about it.
Great. Thanks. Others on council committee reports. City managers' report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick reminder that you can still vote. There's time to turn in your ballots or go to the voting poll, so everyone, please don't forget to do that. And then I wanted to give a few updates about Thursday's Comprehensive Plan Engagement Day. So Thursday, we will have three 90-minute workshops during the day at 11, 1, and 3, and an open house from 5:30 to 7:00, all at the Recreation and Senior Center this Thursday. Each of these events will have the same content, but the workshops will be more hands-on with a project team presentation and small group facilitated activities. The evening open house is more of a format where people can come and engage when they like with more flexibility. For those who can't make these events on Thursday, there are parallel online activities that will be live soon. Look at Engage Louisville and check your mailboxes for a postcard that's gone out about these events. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, city manager. Next item, business is ordinance number 1886, series 2024, an ordinance amending Chapter 15 of the Louisville Municipal Code to extend the deadline to file a building permit, expand the availability of the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code as an alternative for rebuilding of structures, first reading, to set the public hearing for November 19, 2024. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item is another first reading to set a public hearing. Ordinance number 1887, series 2024, an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning the Regulation of Natural Medicine Businesses in the City of Louisville, and amending Title 9 to establish penalties for unlawful use and cultivation of natural medicine. First reading, set public hearing for December 3, 2024. Can I get a motion on that?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item is ordinance number 1884, series 2024, an ordinance adopting City of Louisville Fire Hardening Code for Structures, second reading. It's advertised in the Daily Camera on October 20, '24. I'm going to open the public hearing and actually start briefly with just one explanation because we've got so many people here. An ordinance is something we obviously pass from time to time, and there is, unlike when we're dealing with just resolutions, there are two rounds of public comment. So just bear that in mind as we go forward. Do we have a presentation from staff?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council, Rob Zucaro, Community Development Director for the city. I'll be making the presentation. I also have Chad Root. I don't know where he went. Oh, there he is. Chad Root is here, our chief building official, so he's here to help answer any questions as well. So just to introduce this, we did receive a letter from the Louisville Fire Protection District with a recommendation to consider a citywide fire hardening structure ordinance, and that led to a discussion direction with City Council on July 30 of this year. We looked at broadly wildland urban interface codes as well as home hardening codes. We talked about some of the differences between conflagration fires and wildland urban interface fires and how some, you know, some of the connections between those. And the direction that we got from council at that time was to move forward with a citywide fire hardening code and look at a wildland urban interface code in the future. There is a state requirement that will kick into effect next year that will require communities to adopt wildland urban interface codes if they're in the wildland urban interface, so that mapping and those regulations are being developed now. We may or may not have areas of our city that will fall under the state mapping, but we can certainly consider our own wildland urban face code in the future, so we can work on that next year, see how the state regulation plays out. Part of that discussion was potentially including defensible space landscaping requirements in the WUI code and additional requirements for structure hardening beyond what we're looking at this evening. The idea was that this code would look at some of the more affordable, easier things that we could do citywide. We looked at cost for those potential hardening code, for the home hardening code and the building hardening code. We really focused on residential. Would it impact affordable housing? There are certainly costs, so this code that we have before you this evening would be for new construction, but also for maintenance of your homes. So if you're replacing certain materials or elements of your home, you would have to upgrade, not the entire house, but just those elements of the home that are affected by the code. So that's what we talked about at the discussion direction, so that's the direction that we drafted the ordinance in. So where we landed were minimum regulations, again, for both residential and commercial buildings to address certain building elements. It would be the roof material. So we talked a lot at the study session also about how fire propagates and embers are most likely how wildfires propagate. So a lot of these address embers, but it also, you have to address flame and heat as well. So we have roof coverings is one of the most likely ways for wildfires to spread. So you'd have to have a Class A roof covering. Siding and eve materials would have to be flame resistant. All the vent coverings would have to be 1/8 inch openings or smaller to stop embers from entering into the house. Metal gutters and gutter guards so that those gutters wouldn't melt and you wouldn't get flammable materials within the gutters themselves. That's a common way for fires to spread from embers. Fencing within five feet of the structure would be regulated. It'd have to be a non-flammable fence material. Deck surface materials and railings would be regulated under the proposal, as well as shorter decks that are six feet or lower to the ground. The material, you'd either have to have concrete or weed barriers and rock or something like that under that deck so you wouldn't get vegetation that could also propagate a fire. We did add something that's a little unusual for home hardening codes was, it's very common for solar panels to have screens around them, and the purpose of those screens isn't to stop embers from coming in, it's to keep rodents and other animals from chewing the wires, and that can collect a lot of fuel and debris, so we wanted to make sure that you could remove those solar panel screens, and those could be cleaned periodically from the homeowners. So that was something we added as well. Again, this would be required for new construction as well as if someone's maintaining their home or replacing any of those systems. So we have thresholds in there. Sometimes it's full replacement for siding and roofing. It's 50% or more of the materials. It's more likely for fences and decks that you'd replace the whole thing, so it's just a full replacement with those types of items. So we did take this to our Building Code Board of Appeals on two occasions for them to review the concept as well as the draft ordinance. They are recommending approval. Staff's recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
First, any council questions about the presentation? Yes. Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for putting the work into this and listening to us and a lot of the residents on this, and especially the Fire Department's recommendations. I did have one question as far as some of the exceptions that we're looking at for this. It wasn't covered in the presentation, but it's part of this. There was an exception being made for residential and commercial properties that have the sprinkler systems in them, and I was hoping that maybe we could get the building chiefs officials, get Chad's opinion on this, about combining them into one requirement so that a residential or commercial requirement to be exempt from the hardening would need to have the sprinklers in the roof. Because my understanding is the way that it's written, the residential sprinklers would not be required in the attic, not the roof, sorry, the attic.
Okay. So, yeah, I can chat a little bit about that. So the exception that Judy was talking about is single-family homes, homes that are fully sprinkled with a minimum of NFPA 13R system and are greater than 35 feet from any property line are exempt from the requirements of this chapter. So on the NFPA sprinkler systems, a lot of residential homes have the 13D, which is a basic, if you look at the 13D system for residential, it's to get the person out, it's not to protect the structure. Okay? So it's basically, it gives a little time for people to get out, emergency responders to come in and evacuate the people, but it's not going, it's not a guarantee that the structure won't stop burning. Okay? The 13R is for residential structures, and that's designed, there's more water flow, more heads, but as Judy mentioned, there's not sprinklers in the attic space, but that is designed to put out the fire, the structure that's on fire that's residential, other than the attic spaces, because they, you can't do everything. A lot of times, there's glycol that you need. If you've been paying attention, there's been some glycol problems where the glycol separates out, and then when the head is released, you know, we got heads in here if we had a fire there, and over time, that glycol separates out from the water. And in a couple jurisdictions, when I was over in Utah, we had people that actually got burned because the glycol, under high pressure, burns. And so they've been working on that as far as antifreeze, antifreeze systems to come up with something a little bit different, so when it does separate out. So what Judy's talking about doing is requiring the full 13 system, which is a commercial system. On those commercial systems, and John could probably speak on this a little bit better than myself, those are monitored systems. So a lot of those systems are monitored through a monitoring system, and if there's a flow, it will notify through an alarm system.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll put off my fire marshal, actually.
Okay. Safety in numbers.
So a full 13 system...
Can you, could you state your name?
Yes. My name is Jennifer Henderson. I'm the Louisville Fire Protection District Fire Marshal. To speak to these regulation changes, as Chad mentioned, the 13D is the most basic system, especially for those homes. Taking it up to a 13R is a beefier system. To put the full 13 system into a house is cost prohibitive, so it would be likely that somebody would more likely choose the house hardening components versus the full 13 system. But it's kind of one of those give and takes of like separation and sprinkler coverage. As far as the attic coverage that you mentioned, it's definitely something that could be put into our next cycle of codes, should we want to amend those kinds of things, but we are in those processes, and we can't really touch the NFPA side. Those are just references within our own code.
So following on that, given it's not in the attic, I understand for a house fire, this would probably be really sufficient, right, to help people get out and potentially even save the building. But with a hardening code where we're helping to try to protect from fire that's from outside rather than in, and one of the most infiltrating spaces, correct me if I'm wrong, is an attic through the vents if they are not having the, like, 1/8 inch mesh on them. If the fire starts in the attic, because there is no sprinkler system there, it could just then basically collapse the whole structure if that's completely and fully engulfed. My concern was if we're exempting new homes only, right, we're exempting new homes from the hardening, I was thinking that it would be more successful if the sprinkler system worked within the attic, which is one of the primary ignition spots from a wildfire.
That is a consideration you could make with that exemption, should those people have to, they choose to install the sprinkler system. In addition, they may, we could look at the codes to requiring additional coverage in those attic spaces. It all makes a difference of whether there's storage and how those attics are built out. Most of them don't have a lot of combustibility inside of them, but they are a weak point potentially, and we could definitely consider looking at that future with the NFPA codes and modifying ours to adjust those.
Thank you. So this would be a question for Rob and Chad. How would it be easiest then, since it's not as easy to adjust the fire side of the coding, would it be easier to adjust the language in the hardening code, either to just have the same sprinkler requirement for residential and commercial or specifically not exclude this one, so that it is hardened?
So, yeah, the route that I'm hearing from you, Judy, is to go ahead and require a 13 system for residential. And as Jennifer mentioned, it's not cost-effective, so they would, most likely, unless there was a really odd duck out there, they would probably just go ahead and just harden. It'd be cheaper.
And I would just add, at that point, too, we might want to just, I don't know that the exemption's that important to the code. I think we might want to just remove the exemption, especially on the residential side. I think we've crafted a code that will be, we believe, easily attainable and relatively affordable, so we don't think anybody would really need to take advantage of that exemption. We thought if, it's pretty common to put the residential sprinklers in, and if you're, if you've got a big buffer to a wildland area or other structures, that it might just give people an option, but at this point, I'd maybe recommend just removing it altogether if there was concern about it, and then they would just have to harden the structure.
If my other council members are in favor, that would be my recommendation, and I thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that.
Other questions for staff or the fire marshal while she's up there? Okay. No. Why don't we take our first round of public comment?
Up first is Amanda Mayfield, followed by Tanya Samaru.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. You know, I've looked at this list of proposals. Oh, sorry. Is it on? Is it on? Hey, I want to say thank you for the people that put together this list of recommendations. I think it's very comprehensive, and I know a lot of work, energy, and effort went into it, and a lot of discussions, you know, back and forth, and I think, you know, this is a list of really great, excellent recommendations. You know, I wonder in the studies, if you've done any studies, to how many homes in Louisville today meet this criteria and how many don't, especially like if people are, maybe there's another peril that comes in, maybe it's a hailstorm, maybe something else, and if people don't meet this, but they need to replace their siding or their roof or what have you, and they file something for insurance, have we talked with the insurance companies how they're going to view these recommendations? Because of course, law and ordinance coverage will cover it if you codify these recommendations into law, but insurance companies don't usually look favorably on upgrading people's homes after a peril. And so I'm wondering, with all of our cost of insurance increasing and with insurance companies pulling out of Colorado, if we've taken into consideration how they're going to perceive these new codes? And then my next question is, you know, how many people in Colorado have actually done these things to their homes in the City of Louisville after the fire, right? I think we're all interested in fire hardening our homes. Those who have been able to rebuild, we're still in the process. But if they haven't done it, why haven't they? Right? And one reason could be financial. I mean, gosh, interest rates are nearly doubled since the pandemic, and people are losing their jobs in high tech. There's a lot of layoffs, and a lot of members of our community are impacted by it, and it seems to me irresponsible to codify a set of recommendations for people in our community who may not have the financial means to actually implement those should something happen. something happen to their home, or they need to replace their siding or their window or their roof or something like that. And so, you know, I think they're excellent recommendations, and I really hope that everybody implements it, because I did lose my home in the Marshall fire, and so the more fire hardening, the better. But at the same time, I don't think every recommendation needs to become a law or a code, right? I think that we should incentivize people and encourage them for fire hardening, but not necessarily mandate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Tanya Samaru, followed by Larry Donner.
Hi, Tanya Samaru from Larksburg Lane. Following on what Mandy said, I think it's been very well agreed upon that the cost for whole house replacement to do this is like $5,000 to $10,000. And many of my neighbors did this, not all of them, but many of them, and I'm very proud to report that Cornerstone now has FireWise designation, which is awesome. So if you drive around my neighborhood, and please do, you'll see that we have fire hardened more than any of the other Lewisville neighborhoods. It's not perfect. People misunderstood the landscaping piece the absolute most, but if you drive around, you're going to see defensible space, a lot of it, hardscaping, a lot of hardy, a lot of good stuff, and we're pretty happy about that. A lot of people feel safer living in my neighborhood because of it. We didn't have code, but as many people as possible did this. But I want to point out what happens when you don't have code. There's a story in my neighborhood. An investment builder came, and I sent an email to council and built a house, the most expensive house ever came to my neighborhood, and they sold it with 16 juniper trees in a tiny cramped yard. And many neighbors approached this builder during the open house and said, oh my gosh, maybe you don't know about this, but you know, we're trying to get this FireWise designation, this house is upwind of the whole neighborhood, look at all the yards right downwind of you that fire hardened, you know, metal fences, completely everything. And would you consider pulling them out? We will get shovels and help you. And they said, ah, okay, fine, we'll do it. And then they didn't, and they sold the house. And a new family from Illinois moved in, I'm told, and the builder just said, sorry. And I just want to point out that like, it's not enough to have collective action, like we have a, we have a pretty good quorum in my neighborhood of people who feel strongly about this. This builder is a good reputable builder, but they just didn't get it, and when confronted, they didn't care. And Homebound also, that's Wood Brothers, Homebound almost, they also were discussed, I think the Fire Protection District also reached out to that builder, and Homebound also did the same thing, they said they pulled juniper out, they didn't, and I think I heard they might have added another one. It doesn't matter what we do, if someone's going to build, plant 16 junipers upwind of us, like, we need code, like, it's not enough to just leave this in the hands of residents. So I just wanted to put that story out there, there are people who care about this a lot, it's minimally, it's not cost prohibitive to do. And one, it's like going to a restaurant, I don't smoke cigarettes, but if someone next to me smokes, I have to inhale it. I don't care if someone decides to burn their own house down. The problem is, they're probably going to burn down five more of my neighbor's houses or mine, and that's why we do this. So another thing, just to add it, I would really love if this code included a ban on planting new junipers within 30 feet of any building, because it has happened in multiple, multiple neighborhoods, and the only people who've done it in my neighborhood are investment builders, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Tanya.
Next up is Larry Donner, followed by Ann B.
Good evening, hello, my name is Larry Donner, I live at 1020 Willow Place in Lewisville, and I'm here to thank council and staff for the effort they've put on this, and to show my support for the home hardening for Lewisville. I would support the suggestion of removing residential properties with 13R sprinkler systems from the exceptions, but if council doesn't want to remove it, that's fine, I still would like to see this move ahead, because I support it, and in the long run, it will make our community much safer, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry.
Next up is Ann B., followed by Joanne Spoor.
Hi, I'm Ann Brennan, I live at 888 Larksburg Court in Lewisville. I also strongly support the passage of this ordinance tonight, and I appreciate all the work of the Board of Appeals, the city staff, and our Lewisville Fire Department for putting this forward and bringing this together. I think this code change really lines up squarely with the work that this community has done this year on our values and vision. We talk a lot in the vision and value, core values, about resilience, about sustainability, about the community vibrancy, sustainability, I said, community places. I think the resilience of the community through this fire hardening ordinance will benefit all, and as has been said, it's not the same as an individual house meeting whatever goals it wants to meet, but this is about the safety of the whole community and helping reduce the odds of a large conflagration like we had in 2021, which of course, in many ways is, releases more carbon dioxide than anything else the city might do in a short period of time. Economic vibrancy is also related to this, because we had a significant proportion of our population that disappeared the next day between houses that were destroyed and damaged and smoke damage, and that's not good for business. That, who knows, if that could be 2,000 people, 10% of our population that disappeared when those 550 homes burned and more were damaged. There are so many reasons that this is important for the future of our community, and from our work with the FireWise USA program, I think it also helps us with insurability. There is some evidence that insurance companies are starting to look at things like fire hardening and efforts that people are putting into reducing fire risk in their communities, and I think it could actually help in the long run in terms of our affordability and insurability of our community. So I urge council to approve this tonight, and again, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Next up is Joanne Spoor, followed by Maria, I apologize, McClure.
Good evening, my name is Joanne Spears, I live at 1112 West Enclave Circle, and I'm also here to urge council to support and support the home hardening measures that are before council. My firm belief is that the number one priority of city council and cities is the safety of their residents. And this is just a simple safety measure that can be passed and can, as the experts testified a couple of weeks ago, it can slow a fire down, it can save lives, it can stop a conflagration. And for those of us who rebuilt and are back in our communities, it would have been nice to have these measures in place, because I see the wood fences, but I also see the metal fences, so there are people who are doing some of these things, and those of us who are aware of what these issues were and that this type of home hardening was available did this to our homes. But I don't know that families with full-time jobs and are working that had the time to investigate, oh gee, you know, do I need to put a metal fence here, or do I just attach a regular fence? So having it in the code will at least alert people who may not have the time, or their builder may not care, to help them do these kind of measures, and I think it's just a safety measure. So I appreciate council, and I thank, you know, everybody who put so much effort into getting this to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Next up is Maria McClure, followed by Helen Moschak.
Good evening, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak as always, and thank you so much for listening. You heard us on July 30th, and you directed staff to take action, and they did, and this is great, this brings me peace, this brings me comfort. Like many other people said, this is about safety, this is about sustainability, this is about adapting to climate change, this is about maintaining our insurability and not having what happened on that horrible day happen again, hopefully, right? We're doing, we're putting the science to work, we're taking on the expert recommendations, and the more of them that we layer, the better it gets. And like other people have said, I was lucky, right? My builder, Boulder Creek Neighborhoods, their office is right across the street from you guys, I didn't ask them to do this, I didn't know to do this, but they did this without it being code, and not everyone is going to be that lucky. So please, take it out of luck's hands, make this a standard for our community. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Bram.
Next up is Helen Moschak. Helen, it looks like you're muted on your end.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Helen Moschak, Lewisville resident, and I just wanted to add my voice to the chorus in support of following the science and prioritizing safety, and urge you to vote in favor of the ordinance to set the minimums for fire hardening and the construction codes to protect our people, our community, and our property. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Anyone else? Okay, all right, let's come back to council for other questions or comments. Go ahead, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. So this is actually to everyone else who's here. What do you, I'm curious to see how you feel about eliminating the residential sprinkler exemption, since it would not protect attic spaces from wildfires from getting into the attic? And if it would exempt them from following the hardening rules, which would be what prevents embers from getting in, I think it makes sense to say harden, or if you, I mean, if you still want sprinklers on the interior, then do the R that doesn't include your attic. But if you want to be exempt from hardening, then you probably want to make sure that your attic gets wet in case there is a wildfire and the embers do get in. So if we just remove this from the exemption, then we're creating that layer of safety consistently through the community, is what I'm kind of hoping that you guys are agree. Just listening to everybody and the reasons for it, and I just wanted to kind of put it out there. I also wanted to thank staff for changing the language to all 35 feet from all property lines instead of any one property line. I appreciate that immensely. Yeah, thank you. And thank you again for everybody being in support of truly making this whole community much safer, and a big thank you to staff for listening and the residents for stepping up and making us, making us hear you. Thank you.
I don't know that I have an answer for you.
I gather from the comments earlier from staff that you're suggesting to take out the exemption entirely, is, I think, Director, was that your comment?
Yeah, I think that's our recommendation. It makes sense, certainly, from the embers in the attic and that potentially not providing enough protection, and I think the exemption really wouldn't add a lot. It's not going to cover a lot of properties, it's not going to apply to a lot of properties in town, and it's probably not needed from a cost and feasibility standpoint. I think we were just trying to provide some creative thinking around if there are lots out there, there are large lots, and you're willing to put in a sprinkler system, it might be worth considering an exemption, but I think we'd rather it just went away, rather than requiring something that nobody would do anyways because of the cost.
Good thought. Councilmember Kern. Just for the moment, are folks generally comfortable with that, or are there views that are contrary to that, it sounds like, right? Other comments folks have? I have one. I, I'm going to say that I'm a juniper hater, just straight up, I've always hated junipers, I continued to hate them. They're overgrown at my parents' house, it makes me scared as I'll get out, and obviously they are a fire hazard. Can you just talk to us just a bit about what the reason for excluding landscaping was, and whether it might be good to put junipers in there, even if the rest of the landscaping is, is not covered?
So, yeah, so I think, I think the question is, it's basically a citywide juniper ban on private property, and I think there's a, there's a question of existing junipers and people putting new junipers in, so if we do that, my assumption is, and we'd need clarification, is we would be prohibiting the planting of new junipers. One of the things we talked about is that would be a very intensive undertaking for staff to try to regulate that. We don't require any type of permitting at all for installation of landscaping on existing properties. I expect there'd be lots of property owners that would not be aware of the code and plant junipers, and then we would be in the position of having, if, you know, going and telling them they had to tear those out after investing in those. So there's, not that that's a great reason not to do it, but I think there's staffing issues, resource issues. We anticipated that when we came back with an actual WUWE code, then we could really regulate landscaping, those are the highest hazard areas, and so the rest of the city outside of the WUWE is a lower hazard area, so maybe it would be okay to not regulate in that area. So that was the thinking coming out of the discussion direction.
Thanks. I mean, it's something, at least for my part, that would be good to look at, at the very least, at that next stage. It sounds, it sounds like you'd be just sort of picking, picking one, one plant here, which, and I don't even know whether there are others that are as flammable as junipers. I mean, for all I know, I just, I've heard plenty about junipers, because I think they're, they seem to be popular, why I never understood, but that's just my own editorial comment about plants. But in all seriousness, it's a, you know, it is a concern, but I'm not sure I want to derail the, the code for that purpose only, but especially if we're going to take it up later, but I.
I actually agree with you. I think, I think you're absolutely right in bringing this line item into this, if everyone can do that, I mean, we like everything else that's here. This seems to be one of the, like, the little missing pieces that's a no-cost effort, we're worried about cost. They're a cheap plant and they grow fast, that's the reason people plant them, and they, they don't mind our dry air, so they're, they're popular, especially with builders. And I'm wondering, Directors of CRO, if one of the ways that maybe we can relieve some staff issues on this is, it seems like a lot of the concern comes from production builders or a speculation builder, putting in a home versus a homeowner who's updating their landscaping. I think a lot of the local nurseries and things are aware, and I think that when a builder's just trying to put in whatever, like, the least expensive plant that's going to grow really fast and look super, so if we do prevent this just from new construction, and we say, okay, let's stay consistent, say 35 feet from any prop, from your, from your home, then I think that that would, I think most big production builders are going to see the full code, they're going to be looking at this hardening code, and they're going to see that line item, and they're going to know, oh, I can't put the, the junipers in once they read it. So I think it might be less staff needed, just because they're going to see this anyway as a, as a builder, versus the regular resident who's lived in their house for, you know, 20 years, updating their landscaping. And I, I mean, there's so much evidence as to the danger of how quickly they ignite from high heat, not even just direct flame, that I agree, once we get to a new WUWE down the road and we're looking at this, but this would be a good, quick, non-cost-bearing add-in, I think, for us.
A question, I do want to come back to, because there is a question of cost, and I'm mindful, especially as we're getting ready to pass the budget, that we're trying to be careful about adding responsibilities that we haven't budgeted for. This is an important issue, but I, is, does that, making it apply to new construction help solve the problem that you were raising about enforcement?
That would certainly limit, I think, the administrative burden.
This is an important issue, but I, is, does that, making it apply to new construction help solve the problem that you were raising about enforcement?
That would certainly limit, I think, the administrative burden pretty significantly. It would still be a little bit of a change. We would have to figure out how to reg, I think we'd have to figure out exactly what plants we're regulating. And then I, the question I would have is, would be relatively easy to regulate during that first build. Somebody gets in, gets a certificate of occupancy, we make sure that they don't have any junipers on their property before we give them the CO. Then there's the question of, a few years later, they buy juniper, like, at that point, they'd probably fall into the category of existing development, and they'd be able to bring junipers in at that point. So I, just to be clear, I think if, if that's the direction we go, I would want clarification of what properties it applies to. Is it only at certificate of occupancy? What happens post-certified occupancy as far as expectation for enforcement?
I'd say that the WUWE will be in place by then.
Councilmember Hamilton, and then...
Thank you. First of all, thank you. Great work. Thank you to our citizens for speaking up and educating all of us on this topic to make good forward movement towards tonight. Junipers are an extremely important topic in the context of this conversation, however, in an effort to get what we have in front of us approved tonight, which there's overwhelming support for it. I think we should move forward with what we have and then continue the conversation on junipers, whether they fit in the WUWE code, whether there's an amendment to this in some way. But I'd hate to stall forward momentum with what we have tonight. Let's get something on the books tonight. And I'm also okay removing the sprinkler part we talked about.
Thank you. Member Tim.
I agree.
Councilmember, head.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll throw my agreement in as well. And just as a procedural point, I think we asked during discussion, direction, to not have the vegetation piece in what came back to us. And so I'd hate for us to try and invent it now when we haven't given staff the opportunity to put it in the sort of fully thought-out proposal.
Councilman Fahy.
Yeah, I also agree that we should move forward with what we have tonight and look at that in the future perhaps. But the common, the thing I've noticed with new construction after the fire is that the residents are getting their CO and then planting junipers. So this wouldn't affect that at all.
Okay, I mean, it sounds like the consensus is that we hold off on the, the juniper, a juniper amendment or a potential juniper amendment. We can, I think you're also hearing that there is interest in following up on that, though, in the not-so-distant future. Okay, why don't we take another round of public comment?
Josh Cooperman.
Hi, Josh Cooperman. I live in Lewisville. I also enthusiastically support this fire hardening ordinance, and I also think that removing the exemption is a good idea. Climate change is heightening our wildfire risks, and we need to make Lewisville more resistant to the effects of climate change. Fire hardening structures is one great way to do that, and it's been demonstrated to be one of the most effective ways as well. I would just like to say that it would be great if the city could find some way to support lower-income residents in implementing these fire hardening measures, either, you know, directly through some kind of funding from the city, or if we could connect people to other sources of funding outside of the city, like the $500 that were recently on offer from the county. That would be really great to do as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Josh.
Next up is Lisa Ritchie.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Again, just really want to appreciate, express my appreciation for your time to get this code to this point. While I wish we could sort out the juniper issue tonight, I tend to agree with Councilmember Hamilton's desire to get this code on the books and then keep working through the landscape element. I would just, if, unless there's confidence that could be sorted tonight, I think, I agree. Let's get this code in place. Let's get this one going and then move on from there. But again, really happy we're here and really appreciate all your time and effort.
Thank you, Lisa. Is that a legacy hand online? Yeah, looks like it. Anyone else? Public comment? Okay. Back to council member discussion. I think we've had some of that already. Are there other, other parts that people want to comment on? I want to say, just for my part, that this is a really important step that we're taking. I think we'd like to be out there in front on lessons learned as a result of the fire that we had. I think we're, I don't want to pretend that we're necessarily there, but I think this is, this is something that we can do now that will help protect us in the future. I think it's a confidence-building measure for our residents, and it's doable, and I'm glad that we're taking this step. I want to thank the staff, the council members who've worked on this, the residents who've worked enormously on this over time, because this is a list that I think was a really good example of community, staff, of working, working together in the end to really put something great together for, for all of us. And I hope we'll, we'll pay great dividends. So with that in mind, I think we're ready for a motion. And Councilmember Kern, would you like to, do we have another comment? No, I was going to give you the motion, but go ahead. And I think I've got to, at this point, close the public hearing. Go ahead.
Okay, so thank you. So it moved for ordinance 1884, series 2024, an ordinance adopting the City of Lewisville Fire Hardening Code for Structures.
With the...
Yes, with the change to the exceptions to remove Part B under 1570030, which is the single-family sprinklers.
Second. Any discussion on the motion?
I just want to say thank you to all of you, but to these other six especially. Thank you. Thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. This affects me personally, as all of this did, and I'm among the many residents, not just council members, who has spent a couple of years studying this, learning about this, and grateful to know that I'm going to live in one of the safest fire-prone communities in the country. So thank you for this.
Okay, why don't we take a roll call?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
An emphatic yes.
Councilmember Beerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffner?
Yes.
Passes. Thank you very much. All right, on to Resolution Number 51, series 2024, a resolution approving a planned unit development amendment and special review use to allow construction of a 728-square-foot addition to an existing building to establish outdoor dining and outdoor commercial amusement uses with a bar and restaurant located at 947 Pine Street. Are there any disclosures? Okay. I thought we lost a council member there. All right. Is there a applicant presentation, or actually, is there staff presentation? Let's start with that.
Tonight, we'll be presenting Resolution 51, series 2024, recommending approval of a request for a planned unit development amendment and special review use to allow outdoor dining and outdoor commercial amusement at 947 Pine Street. The project is otherwise referred to as the Birdie Bar in the application materials that were presented in the council packet. This application was brought to the plan commission on September 12th, where the commission recommended approval as proposed. So as mentioned, the application is for a planned unit development amendment and special review use to allow an addition to the existing building that would support a bar and restaurant use with virtual golf inside, outdoor dining, and outdoor commercial amusement, again, both of which require a special review use approval. The outdoor commercial amusement element of this particular proposal is miniature golf, which is explicitly defined in the definition, or included in the definition, rather, of outdoor commercial amusement. The property is located at the northwest corner of Pine Street and Front Street, as you can see on the exhibit presented on the slides, in a prominent location at the east gateway to downtown Lewisville. The lot is currently occupied by the vacant Shamrock Fueling Station or Gasoline Service Station, and the property is owned commercial community and is subject to the downtown design guidelines and framework plans. A bit of background on the property. The property was originally developed as a fueling and service station in 1929. The building was updated in 1961 to include a car wash. You can see the, the photo on the screen is from the original use of the site and the building. The existing building that's there now in use were entitled as part of the George Oil Planned Unit Development, which was approved in 1988, and then included the continuation of a gasoline service station and expanded to a grocery use. Continuing a bit with background here, as some folks may be aware, the existing sign on the site is actually landmarked. The sign was erected in 1961 and landmarked as the standard oil sign. The applicant intends to retain the sign as is required. Any change to the copy of the sign would require an approved alteration certificate from the Historic Preservation Commission. So under the proposal, the, the development includes a 728-square-foot addition to the existing structure for a total building size of 2,608 square feet. You can see the exhibit on the screen. The existing building is highlighted in green with the additions in blue. Obviously, the entire site is being updated as well with pergolas, outdoor dining, and then the outdoor miniature golf. The expanded structure will include, again, indoor virtual golf with a bar and a small eatery, and exterior improvements will include the outdoor dining area as well as, again, the miniature golf. The site is bound by, on front and Pine Street, by a six-to-seven-foot landscape buffer, which includes an open low-style fence similar to the design across the street at Lucky Pie and Sweet Cow. Continuing on with the proposal, based on the overall square footage of the building on site, this development would be required to provide four off-street-on-site parking spaces. The site is just over 9,400 square feet in size. You can see the exhibit on the screen is reflective of current site conditions. What you see highlighted in red are actually existing vehicle curb cuts and existing vehicle access points on this particular site. Those three red rectangles represent roughly 135 linear feet of drive cuts and access points. Just for reference, the, the full linear frontage of Front Street and Pine Street is 235 linear feet, so almost 60% of the street frontage of this site right now is occupied by vehicle access points. We're taking a closer look at the site on the northeast side there. You can see there's actually four to five parking spaces that are all head-in parking spaces. That particular configuration would require a vehicle user to pull head in and then back out over a pedestrian way and into the right-of-way. That's a condition we would no longer permit, and we would look to be corrected on a new application for development. So based on the current conditions and then the location of the site, staff recommended that the applicant satisfy their parking requirement with a non-refundable parking improvement fee in lieu to be paid into the downtown parking improvement fund. This method for satisfying the parking standard would, would satisfy the parking standard with no additional action required in the form of a parking reduction or a waiver. The applicant has agreed to pay that fee, and that fee would amount to $23,152 per space, total of four spaces. That total would be $92,608. And again, that would go toward the downtown parking improvement fund. There would be no off-street parking on this site. With the closure of those access points, now what, what we gain in that is we gain a more walkable, pedestrian-oriented downtown area that will reduce vehicle and pedestrian conflicts. We will also gain six to eight public parking spaces directly adjacent to the site along Pine and Public Street. Obviously, those access points right now prohibit any parking on the street. That final number is yet to be finalized with permit review and construction document review, but given the proposal and the prominent location, the staff support the request to satisfy the parking standard with a fee in lieu. The applicant provided a great rendering that kind of depicts exactly what that will look like with the improvements. You can see, obviously, the, the outdoor dining area, the miniature golf area, but I think more importantly, you see the continuation of unimpeded sidewalks and additional street improvements. And then again, those parking spaces that would now be available directly adjacent to Pine and Front Street. Public improvements will include additional streetlights and then also additional street trees. Taking a closer look at the analysis, the applicant has requested two waivers to support redevelopment of the site. Again, this is in addition to an existing building. The first waiver is for relief from the rear setback standard of 20 feet that's applicable to the commercial community zone district. You can see the 20-foot setback line depicted in red on the north side of this property or the top of the site plan there. The existing building is well within the 20-foot rear setback standard. The existing setback on the north side is 2.5 feet. The applicant is proposing to expand that non-conformity by 8.3 feet to the east. You can see that highlighted as the blue rectangle on the right side of the site. The second waiver request would be for relief from the 10-foot side interior setback. This is depicted on the left side or west side of the site. The existing building setback is 4.3 feet, and the applicant intends to expand the building 28 feet while retaining that 4.3-foot setback. So neither the north side setback or the, or the west side setback would be decreased, but rather that condition would be continued. The subject site is, again, in the commercial community zone district and subject to those standards. Although there is a downtown design guidelines, downtown design guidelines, they don't, there is no sep, there are no setback standards, rather. They would override the commercial community standards. And so staff find that both the side interior and rear setbacks that are applicable to the CC district are limiting for this particular corner property in downtown. If you take a look at the existing and historic development pattern that exists downtown, there are minimal setbacks. So in allowing, or rather, supporting these waivers will allow for the adaptive reuse of this building and then activated open space that will support that unimpeded pedestrian connection on site. So staff support their waivers as requested. Further analysis occurred via the Downtown Lewisville Design Handbook, the Downtown Lewisville Framework Plan, and then the Planned Unit Development Review Criteria and the Special Review Use Criteria, all found in municipal code. Detailed analysis is in your staff packets via the staff report and application materials. And so a quick review of the design handbook policies. The site is located within the core area of downtown. You can see the exhibit shown on, on the slide here. The area highlighted in blue is that core area. The subject property is highlighted in red. The elements of the core area include ground-floor oriented design with human-scale views that, again, support that pedestrian-oriented environment and invite exploration of the area. Staff find the proposal is in line with the intent of the Downtown Design Handbook. And again, more detailed analysis is provided in the staff report. Here's some examples that the applicant provided of architectural renderings that depict conformance to those design standards. So again, storefront glass, human scale, and a pedestrian-oriented design. So continuing, the design expresses human and pedestrian scale through form and materials with the creation of that activated street edge, which is not currently present on site. The addition and the renovation of the exterior match the architectural style and... The addition and the renovation of the exterior match the architectural style and vernacular of downtown, specifically with smooth lap siding and brick veneer, and then the mass and scale of the proposal is also in line with downtown developments that are generally single in one story. Taking a look at the special review use criteria, we have five criteria that staff will use to determine whether or not the review is appropriate for the property and will generate any negative impact on surrounding and adjacent properties. The first review criteria is whether the request satisfies the comprehensive plan. Staff find that the comprehensive plan supports creating a unique sense of community, which this development does, and then also the comprehensive plan speaks to vibrant and healthy economies, and so the redevelopment of this site will lead to economic stability with a project that matches the character of the area. And so that leads directly to the second review criteria that, again, directly relates to economic stability with the project that matches the character of downtown. The third criteria is more related specifically to site design, and more specifically horizontal site design, so utilities, stormwater drainage, things of that nature. This project went through review with our public works department. They found it satisfactory at the planned unit development stage. The project is currently under review with construction documents and permits. Public Works will further review to ensure that the site is designed appropriately and in line with our engineering design standards. The fourth criteria would involve control of external effects, which would be regulated through appropriate lighting, building, and site design. Staff requested that the applicant include notes on the PUD that are specifically aimed at lighting, so will require shielded and/or downcast lighting, and low-temperature and low wattage lighting as well. So the PUD currently conforms to those notes that we're asking for on, for the development. The other item that we'll look for from a notes perspective that will require on the PUD is a restriction on amplified music from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM, common restriction that would apply to other outdoor dining uses in downtown Louisville. And then lastly, the proposed development significantly improves the streetscape and pedestrian character of downtown. And so with that, the planning commission, again, recommended approval on September 12, 2024, and staff recommended approval of Resolution 51 Series 2024 approving a planned unit development amendment and special review use to allow outdoor dining and outdoor commercial amusement in 947 Pine Street with the condition that the development agreement that staff and the applicant are currently working on be finalized prior to recording the final planned unit development. With that happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, council. Yes, Councilman Abraha.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Just one question on the parking piece, which is, you're saying essentially we're going to free up about eight parking spaces on street that don't exist today?
Correct, yeah.
And we don't credit any of those against the onsite parking requirement?
There's not an opportunity written in the ordinance for any credit. The language specifically allows for the fee in lieu per space required.
Fair enough. Too bad about that for the applicant, but thank you.
I was going to make a similar comment. It's like, we're gaining spaces, and the fee in lieu is, you know, we want more spaces. We've just picked up eight, so it's unfortunate the ordinance can't be, but maybe we can think about revitalization, but, you know, we'd love to have that money poured into the project, but that's just a comment. I love the, I love the project. Fully supportive.
Remember to...
Well, funny, we all have the same question. Does council have the authority to waive the fee in lieu?
I don't know. I'd have to look at the ordinance. I don't know that that would be an option. It may have to be a parking reduction request, but based on the codified provisions that we have, I think we would take the, we would move to the fee in lieu option because it is in the downtown area. It's the option that's provided to us in the ordinance, so... But we can take a look in the ordinance and see.
So, so I guess, we could, if we reduce the required on-street or off-street parking to zero, then they wouldn't be required to pay a fee in lieu?
So there is a parking reduction section of the code, that somebody can request a parking reduction. They could, there are criteria, so they can make a request and demonstrate they meet the criteria. So there is a section of the code that allows that reduction. We haven't looked at that or analyzed that. We are netting more spaces, you know, off-site. It's a benefit to downtown. We hear a lot in downtown that, you know, parking is tight downtown. Our downtown parking in lieu fee is shared, you know, shared parking. So I think there's a dual benefit to having the streetscape improvements done to create the parking as well as collecting the fee in lieu, which is what the ordinance would require and would benefit downtown.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's what we're maybe identifying is, we're getting a benefit. We're getting a better streetscape. We're getting more parking. We're getting all the things we want, and so it seems odd to then charge them for improving on the parking, to charge them for parking. So trying to figure out the right mechanism, and one other question I have that you can maybe answer at the same time, because you obviously have some, is who has to pay for the new curb cut or lack of, who has to pay for the new sidewalks that don't have the curb cuts?
Right, so the, that's a public improvement that the applicant would have to construct.
So they're going to pay for our eight parking spots?
So, right, and I don't know if they, so they are in the urban renewal district. I don't know if they intend, they, I don't believe they've applied yet for urban renewal, assistance for public infrastructure. They have the potential to do that. That is something that the LRC and the city council could fund. I don't know if that would happen. So I think, until we know if they apply and if they receive funding, because there is the chance that urban renewal would build those spaces and build that streetscape, I don't know. And in that case, you know, they wouldn't have to pay for it, and they wouldn't be meeting their obligation for their off-street. So there is a difference between the off-street and the on-street, certainly, but, so, so we don't know. There's a lot of unknowns, and they haven't applied for the reduction. I think if they want to apply for the reduction, that could be considered under those criteria.
So I appreciate that, because I think, you know, looking at the applicants, what that sounds like is a delay, right, in having for them, I mean, not, no one's fault, but they would have to, we wouldn't be able to approve this, and then they could, or is there a way to approve this as-is, and they could come back with an amendment later? Like, they don't want delays, you don't want this to go to January for approval, so I'm sure they don't want to do that. So is there a way that this can come back to us in some other form later that doesn't delay them, and we can readdress the parking issue?
Well, I think we could come back and have another hearing that would amend, if there's, if there is an approval tonight that includes, you know, their agreement to pay the parking fee, then they could come back and request an amendment to that. We could have a new hearing, and that would amend their approval. I think that would achieve what you're looking at, because I don't think it was part of the application, so the public wasn't aware of it, and they don't have all those opportunities.
Yeah, I think it's totally fair, and just trying to, like, I like to joke that staff is the computer and then we are the humans, right? So they have to follow rules. They can't just, you know, they can't be as flexible as council can sometimes be. And so trying to get the humans on this dais to kind of see the, like, well, this seems a little weird. Is there a way to get through it? So I see that you guys are thinking about ways to get through it. Sounds like you guys have some options of next steps to get through it later, but I hope you hear that there's a council that's identifying the odd situation of, that you're actually improving our parking by doing what you're doing, so.
Yeah, and a question. Is there another question for?
I have a quick question. How did, how did this work out with the downtown vision plan that we're working on for Front Street? I just didn't know, like, it would be such a shame, again, for the spending of all of this funds to a year or two from now. It's completely different than what the plan is, and we're redoing it. I just wanted to make sure that that was, you know, in line with it.
Yeah, I would, I'll start, and then Planner Post can weigh in also, but my thought is, is that's, you know, we have a design approved. We don't have any final plans. I think we're anticipating that by the time they get into construction, we may know that there are, there is a different streetscape design. We certainly don't want them to make those improvements. We don't know for certain that the downtown plan will be implemented. There's a lot of momentum. There's definitely potential funding. You know, there's a plan coming to you for approval, but there's a lot of unknowns. So if the timing aligns, we would certainly shift there, that design and those public, that public infrastructure approval to align with the downtown streetscape plan, but we're probably not going to have final plans until late next year. And again, what, you know, what if those, so we might be able to work on a deferment with them for some time, but we don't want to hold up their project, so that's something we could consider.
Okay, great, thank you. I was just saying, absolutely don't want to hold it up. I'm looking forward to being a customer, so.
Other question, any other questions? All right, why don't we take some public comment?
Josh Cooperman?
Mayor, I just want to remind you, the applicant probably wants to give a presentation as well.
Applicant presentation.
Hi, hello, good evening. Thanks for having us here. I'll make this quick. I don't want to completely repeat everything that Planner Post has shared tonight. I'm Sonya Starr, and I live in Brighton with my husband, who's a co-owner, and I'm joined by other, our other co-owners, Danny and Amy Grismalla, who reside in Broomfield. So again, to summarize, we've, Planner Post has shared what our development concept is and what we're hoping to do. We are really very passionate and energized about our project. So summarizing through this and our overall requests, I did want to kind of just run through and share with you. We did bring our extended team here today. If you have detailed questions about the project, we can answer those for you today. This is the inspiration kind of board we have that shows the look and feel of what we're trying to bring to this community. We think it's a big uptick in this, relative to the spaces there today, and I left, I left my corporate gig of 25 years to go do this, so I'm really excited to make this work and make it be a really great place for people to spend their hard-earned kind of fun money. We are, we will have the virtual golf inside and out. We are having, our vision is an elevated food and bar program, so think of more shareable plates, tapas, lighter foods. We've hired two restaurant consultants to help us make sure we make the important decisions, make them correct and early. There are also really great support system with regard to all of the things that we want to be really smart about, like code and all the operations and how that might work once we're up and running. We've already seen these renderings here, but this is going to be a beautiful view coming into the side of town. I think it'll be an inviting place and drive a lot of commerce and energy in this part of downtown. I will run through some of these. We do get a lot of interest in the miniature golf, so we're pretty excited about miniature golf leagues, and I think this will be a great, a great place for families and lots of folks to enjoy some summer nights and things like that. You can see here, we do have the, we'll have these slider doors that'll open up, that'll bring a lot of the outside into the area, which I think will make a very warm and inviting space for folks. And here's my personal vision for how the lounge might look. So this is a great environment for all types of people, families, friend groups, affinity groups, business happy hours, private events. We think this will be a great space. Ooh, I'm rotating. One second, there you go. It won't look like that. Another view here. Again, we'll have a little fireplace in there and some shelves. It does feel like a really nice laid-back little lounge, and you can see here, these are the three simulator bays. So if you haven't tried one of these out, I highly recommend it. It's a humbling experience. So again, this is that walkability and that pedestrian view that I'm really excited about. I think whether this is a destination for you and you already know about it, or you just kind of happen to stumble on it, I think it'll be great. And so I'll turn it over to Carolyn.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and members of city staff and members of the public. My name is Carolyn White. I'm Landy's counsel for the applicant. Really appreciate your attention to our application this evening. I won't repeat anything that staff presented to you. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. In addition to the staff report and analysis, which is very thorough and has a lovely appendix of all the criteria and how the application meets each of the criteria, we also submitted a letter with our analysis of those same criteria, and that's in your packet. Hopefully, you had a chance to read that. I won't repeat all of that. I just wanted to mention and hopefully summarize on this slide some of the ways in which this proposal furthers the goals in the comprehensive plan. In particular, just to supplement what staff highlighted, for example, there is some mention in the comprehensive plan about retail primary streets, best position for retail success, and this is one of those streets, and we think that this use in this location will really help further that particular goal, as well as all of the economic vitality, unique places kind of goals that staff referenced, economic development goals, and so on. There are, of course, the two sets of criteria, the PUD criteria, the used by special review criteria. This application meets all of the technical ones as well as some of those more visionary things about fulfillment of the plan goals and so on, and then, of course, all of the downtown design guidelines, the noise landscaping, and I want to assure you that there are no junipers proposed for the landscaping. We also saw the iconic sign. It is proposed that the content of that sign will be replaced with the Birdie Bar logo, and that will be, as you heard, the subject of a separate application before the Historic Preservation Commission. So in summary, for all the reasons stated, we believe this application not only meets but exceeds all of the applicable criteria, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you.
I think that's it. I don't know how to go to the next slide. There we go. Whoops. Okay.
Do we have any questions for the applicant or council? To the applicant? Nope. Okay. Now let's take some public comment.
Josh Cooperman?
Josh Cooperman. I live in Louisville. I think this is a great application. It's, as was said before, it's a great replacement for the previous use, and I think it'll be a great addition to downtown. It should have, you know, bring activities and entertainment that will draw residents and visitors to downtown. My family and I will look forward to playing mini-golf there. I particularly like the fact that they are reusing an existing building, and I, so therefore I support the waivers that let them do so, and I also like the landscaping that will be added to this portion of downtown. Thanks.
Thanks, Josh.
Next up is Mark Oberholzer.
Thank you. This is Mark Oberholzer. I am vice president of the Downtown Business Association. I also own Tilt Pinball right across the street, and I just want to lend my support to this project. I think it's great to have another entertainment option in town. The more, the better. I think it'll make it a great place to be a real complement to what we offer. I'm also really happy to see the council looking reasonably at these parking options. It was my main question that came up, so I'm glad that everybody thinks that this would be a good thing to pursue and help offset that fee in lieu, since they really are providing some, some great assets to downtown. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
That's it.
That's it, all right. We'll take it back to council comments. Yes?
Yeah, I think it's a great project. I think, for me, the big question are the exemptions or exceptions that are being asked for. I think that's kind of our role here. Again, the computers can tell you yes to almost everything, but not to some of these waivers that are being asked for. And so I agree with what Josh Cooperman just said, but the adaptive reuse of the building, you know, and that building is already too close to the edges of the property, so it makes sense to continue that addition in the same configuration. It just would be such a waste of space and odd to create those extra buffers when the buffer won't exist along the whole property line. So I, for me, I think that's an easy yes, and as far as, you know, the special review use, and, and again, asking for, you know, that's sort of, you know, again, has to come to council to get approval of those things. I think it's a fantastic use. It goes right along with the fun and spirit of Lucky Pie and Henry's and tilt, and pitch and everything. It's, what a fun few hundred, 100 feet there. So I'm 100% in support of everything I'm seeing. I don't have any issues myself, and hope that something can be done about the parking fee at some point through this process. And yeah, the LRC is a great resource for potentially that, or maybe coming back to us, but otherwise, I'm in total support.
I agree with everything that was just... I agree with everything that was just said, especially on the parking fee, if we could find a way for our folks to work with the applicant and think about if there's any option to sort of do a common sense, what feels like a common sense thing where we're picking up double the required parking on-street and, you know, I'm not sure if $23,000 is a huge amount of money in the grand scheme of this project, but, you know, times four. So, I mean, that's real money. I'd love to see it go back to the applicant. The only other thing I'll mention is also on the setbacks, I'm happy to grant the waiver. And in times like this, it always makes me want to reconsider whether we need these setbacks in downtown, right? If we're happy to grant a waiver, do we really want to have those in the code to begin with? Is it getting us the kind of development that we really want to see?
Yes. Councilmember Kern?
Yeah, I agree. I'm in favor of granting all of the waivers that you've requested. I love the fact that the added space that we're getting from granting that in the front, especially with the proposed plantings, is going to be so inviting, and the lighting that's being proposed, it activates and energizes what is now a kind of a dark and little dreary spot to walk past, especially after 5:00 at this time of year. So I'm 100% on board to say yes, and I'll just throw in a third level of, or fourth, I guess, support of, you know, should they need it, and it still works with the future downtown plans, let's find a way to not take $100,000 away from, you know, a great project when we are getting the parking we need.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, my support for this project, this is exactly what we want as a town, right? We want amenities, right? We don't, we want, and it's a perfect corner for that, right? You have pizza, play golf, you have golf, you have ice cream. So, you know, I'm going to reiterate what we've all said. Let's think about common sense prevailing on the parking piece, just because we're gaining more than double than what we've required. So let's think about that. But yeah, I love this project. Great.
Any other comments? I think the, with respect to the P D waivers, I think for the reasons that have already been described, I think fully meet that requirement, and I think that's not, I think they're absolutely justified. In terms of the criteria for SRU, I think they're already met, and I think I would echo the fact that this is going to be a wonderful addition to downtown. This is the kind of thing we need, and I appreciate your coming forward. My only concern about the parking piece is I don't want to bake it up on the dais. That's my only thing, because I don't necessarily trust our ability to see around all corners to make sure this works for the applicant and for us. So, I mean, to the extent we can pass what we have tonight, I'm glad to entertain, you know, if there is a way that is very clear to provide some relief from the parking, the fee in lieu, that's great. If not, I hope that there'll be some, you know, we can follow up appropriately so that a new application or an application for whatever sort of relief is appropriate can come forward. I would maybe ask staff for a recommendation as to how to proceed on that.
So my initial thought with this discussion again was for the, I think the options are the applicant. We could continue the hearing to a date certain perhaps, and then have them amend their application to include the formal parking reduction request, or it can be passed as is, and then they could come back with some sort of amendment. And then there could be a new public hearing to consider the amendment, like an amended resolution, and if City Attorney Kelly has other options.
No, I think that works. When is the fee due?
I don't, that's a good question. I don't know. I think it's probably due at the time of recording, at building permit. So yeah, their attorney is saying it's at the time of building permit, which sounds correct. So that's, could be a ways off, and there might be time to come back before they're ready for their building permit.
Yeah, I don't know that we can do this consistent with the fact that the, well, no. Can we get at least a little bit of an indication from the applicant as to which way might work best? Given those two options.
Mayor and council and staff, really appreciate you all considering this, you know, from the dais. And I would just say on behalf of the applicant that we would prefer that you consider and hopefully approve the application that's before you tonight, and then we'll confer about potentially coming in with an amendment in between now and the time that the fee might be due, because your decision on this doesn't affect the physical layout at all, right? So we could proceed, and in fact, may even be able to proceed with some portions of the project, like demolition and so on, without, before the actual building permit is pulled and get that amendment made. But it doesn't change the layout, doesn't change the configuration, so it just changes the dollars.
And I appreciate that, because, I mean, my main concern is to try to get you on your way forward, and I think all of this feels similar.
That is the applicant's main concern as well.
I mean, yeah, I kind of thought that might be the case. All right. So we will, at this stage, yeah.
So my only concern with the waiver, you know, reduction, is that there's some crazy requirement that they won't meet, and we'll be like, well, sorry, we got to keep the fee in lieu. So I just, that's my only concern, not knowing the requirements.
Right. Not to get into a substantive discussion of that, but I think that's a viable path forward for them, and we'd have to judge that when it comes back.
Okay, that's fair. Yeah, thanks.
Good. Any other comments? All right. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Go ahead. Did you want to?
Sure. I move that we pass resolution number, you good? I move that we pass resolution number 51, series 2024.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Let's take a roll call. Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Beerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you very much. We're looking forward to this. All right. Next, ordinance number 1885, series 2024, an ordinance vacating an access easement located within Outlet A of the Storage Tech Building 6 subdivision. Second reading advertised in the camera on October 20th, 2024. Open the public hearing and start with staff.
Good evening again, Mayor, Members of Council.
Before we jump into that, sorry, I got to recuse myself from this one, due to the same conflict of interest I mentioned with respect to the earlier item. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I should ask if there are any other disclosures? No. We'll wait for Mr. Hefner to absent himself.
All right. I'll just do a quick introduction. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation for this. This is a little bit of a cleanup following the approval of the Redtail Ridge filing number one plat. There was a platted parcel with, most of Redtail wasn't platted, but there was a platted parcel when Storage Tech wanted to sell a property, a particular building. There was an access easement granted to the city, so we're coming back as a cleanup item to request that council vacate that access easement that was dedicated to the city via that plat.
Any council questions for the director? No? First round of public comments. None? Further council comments? Okay. Second round of public comment? Oh, you have a.
I have just one question of staff. When you, I look at the picture of the map, it shows the access going out to, is it 88th there?
It goes out to the, actually goes out to the east, to the old 96th right-of-way.
Right. And so this isn't going to disappear. We'll still have that access in and out of the property? It just won't be what?
No. So this, with the new, with the Redtail Ridge new development plans, this access is not needed at all. So we would vacate it in its entirety, and then Redtail would be accessed by a whole new series of road. So this is just, would remove it altogether from a public access.
Thank you.
Okay. Second round of public comment? All right. Let's return to final council comments. Close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 1885, series 2024, an ordinance vacating an access easement located within Outlet A of the Storage Tech Building 6 subdivision, second reading. Second.
Okay. Any comment or discussion? All right. Let's take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Beerman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes. Okay. The vacation passes. All right. Next is item F. Wait for Councilmember Hefner to get back. It's for the adoption of the 2025 budget and mill levy. There are three pieces to this. First is resolution number 52, series 2024, a resolution summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for the city of Lewisville, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January 2025 and ending the last day of December 2025. The second is resolution number 53, series 2024, annual appropriation resolution for the city of Lewisville, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2025 and ending December 31, 2025. The third is resolution number 54, series 2024, a resolution levying general property taxes for the year 2025, excuse me, 2024, to help defray the costs of government for the city of Lewisville, Colorado, for the 2025 budget year. So one is to approve the budget, second is to approve the appropriation, and the third is to set the mill levy. So we'll leave it to staff director. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Good evening. Today's staff is here for a brief presentation and to request the adoption of the city's 2025 budget and 2025-2030 capital improvement plan. I'd like to say thanks to city staff that worked on this, our department directors, interim city manager, Seema Fox, and your council for your hard work and efforts on this budget. Today's agenda, we'll start with council priorities used in developing our biannual budget and CIP plan. Next, we'll review the budget development timeline of all publicly held meetings to date. There have been no changes since the October 15 public hearing. We'll revisit our property tax and city mill levies, and we'll end with staff's recommendation. City staff utilized your council priorities and leveraged the resident survey in prioritizing budget requests in arriving at our balanced budget. Those priorities were economic prosperity, public safety, maintaining core services and infrastructure, affordable housing, all through the lens of EBI and environmental This slide outlines all of the work and public meetings held to date on our budget development to arrive at this evening's adoption. Not very bright, but here we are on November 4. There have been no modifications or changes to the 2025-2026 biannual budget or the 25-30 capital improvement plan since the October 15 council meeting. The city has two mill levies, one for general operations and another for recreation debt service. For 2025, the following mills were used to budget property tax revenues. The general operating mill is 5.184. This is unchanged from 2024. And the recreation debt service mill at 1.375, also unchanged from 2024. For 2025, budgeted property tax revenues by fund, for the general fund, 5.168 million; for the recreation debt service fund, 1.368 million. A reminder that the final assessed valuations multiplied by these mill levies will determine the actual amount of property tax received in 2025. Property tax is a major revenue driver for the city, and we are projecting moderate growth from 2024 to 2025 at 2.2%. This is a non-reassessment year. Let me go over these bars here. 2014, this is aggregate property tax revenue. 2022, we split out or bifurcate the two revenue sources. Our general operating mill is the lighter green, and then the rec center debt revenue is the yellowish color. If you add them up, this is the aggregate property tax revenue, millions. The white line across the top is the mill levy. Here at about 6.9 is the accumulation of those two mills. 5.184 of this white line is the general operating mill, 1.375 is the rec center mill. This is 2024. This is 2025. You can see it's unchanged. In 2026, we do predict or anticipate increasing the rec center debt levy, about 0.5, to align with rec center debt payments. That's 2026 and beyond. Today's staff is requesting that city council approve the three resolutions the mayor mentioned earlier, a resolution adopting the budget, a resolution appropriating funds, and a resolution levying property tax. With that, I would like to thank you for your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions from council? Yes, Mayor Pro Tim?
Thanks. So I see that 24 and 25 are likely to be, one, the same mill levy, and, two, a very similar amount of actual dollars coming in, because it's not a reassessment year. So the increase is more just around houses being finished, construction, things like that, so slight increase. What is the total mill that we are allowed to charge based on the ballot voting? And we passed a maximum amount that we're allowed to charge, and we're doing a credit. Do you, can you remind me what the total mill is?
Mayor Pro Tim, are you referencing the rec center debt mill levy or either?
No, just, sorry, just the 5.184. Could be as high as, I want to say 6.
I may look to council on this one. Looking back historically, I've seen 5.184, going back as far as I can see, so that may be the maximum. I haven't seen anything higher as far as I can look back.
I don't know what the answer to this is.
Okay, sorry. That's fine. I apologize. We're like a gotcha question. I was just curious what, I know that it's, we are able to charge more total than we are charging. That was a conversation, we made a decision to not, to credit back a portion of this mill levy amount, but we're doing it in a way in which if we needed to, we could increase this mill levy without going to the voters, because we are only, we're just giving a rebate of the portion of the total amount we're allowed to. Well, I just want to kind of get that in the record.
Yeah. Councilmember Hefner?
Can I weigh in? I think I have the answer you're looking for, which is the general fund mill levy, as I understand it, is set as high as we can go without going to the voters, and the temporary reduction in the rec center mill levy is necessary for a number of reasons, but we can increase it back up to whatever we need to do to pay the debt service on an ongoing basis without a vote of the people.
Other questions? No other questions. Why don't we take public comment?
Josh Cooperman?
Josh Cooperman. I live in Lewisville. All right. So I understand that the budget is basically said and done, and that's fine. So I understand that the budget is basically said and done, and that's fine, but I do want to make kind of two comments. One related to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the other one related to environmental sustainability, and they're actually somewhat related in a way. So first of all, I am somewhat disappointed that the DEI manager position has been eliminated. And I'm also somewhat disappointed that we have delayed funding the construction of some of the solar arrays that were recommended in the internal decarbonization plan. On the other hand, I'm also happy to see that in the capital improvements projects, there's a lot of push for electrification. So how are these two things kind of related? And it has to do with city planning and then implementation of that planning. So in the case of diversity, equity, and inclusion, right, the city formed a task force, got residents, hired a consultant, and spent about a year discussing these issues. And then we had a, we got a plan, which was approved by council. And in that plan, it called for establishing a DEI manager position as well as some other things, which we did try to follow through, right? We hired someone and it didn't entirely work out, but... So, you know, what I see is we're sort of, we put all this investment into this planning effort, listening to our residents, but now we're kind of backtracking on what they recommended. And it's somewhat similar with the internal decarbonization plan. Again, we hired consultants, they put together a great plan for us. It said you should really do these solar arrays early on because then you'll be saving money in the long run. And we have sort of pushed off some of that, the recommendations in those, in that planning. You know, so I think, you know, obviously, we want to do planning, right? That's what we should be doing all the time, but then we need to go ahead and implement our plans if we think they good, if we think they are good. And I think both of those efforts were good efforts. And so I would, I hope, you know, that we can find a way to bring back the DEI manager position. And I hope that we also can find a way to speed up installation of those solar arrays. Hopefully, the federal government funding for those will remain, and if it does remain, it would be good to access that funding as soon as possible. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh.
Next, we have Tamara, followed by Helen Moschak.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, this is Tamara Krantz. Does anybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Yeah, I have two concerns with the budget. First, thanks for all the details in the presentation, and wow, what a lot of work has been done on this. I just have two concerns, maybe more of a question on affordable housing and a plea regarding the EDI position. It seems to me that the size of the affordable housing budget item requires more detail. I'm hoping that Finance Director Bailey could provide the public with a little bit more details on how the $2 million was arrived at. For comparison, I see that the 2.4 million for the rec center decarbonization includes very specific actions and their respective costs for implementation that are laid out in the decarbonization plan. And likewise, with road resurfacing, you could probably tell me the priority roads. But for this item, I have, there's a lot of questions I still have, like, will this be only for income restricted affordable housing? Director Bailey, if you could tell us, is there any earmarked already for the Thistle Development? How much? Does this include preservation of our mobile home park? Preservation of naturally occurring affordable housing? Rental assistance? Will lower income levels be served first? Please tell us as much as you can about this line item. Second, I, and I actually see these two items as being very interconnected. I feel really strongly that we need to keep the EDI manager position. I guess I agree with almost everything that Josh Cooperman was saying, so I won't repeat that stuff, but as we're considering strategies for housing in Louisville, I think an EDI manager position could help hugely with ideas on how the $2 million housing fund, funding could serve a diverse population, and we don't end up with two sides of the tracks. I mean, not literally, but, you know, all the housing on one side of the tracks for poor people or something like that. I think an EDI manager is really important, and that's part of the, that was like the core part of what the EDI task force recommended in their strategy. So please, see if there's a way, even in this meeting, that you can reinstate it, and I hope Director Bailey can give us more information on how, how the 2.4 million, I mean, $2 million for affordable housing will be used. Thank you so much for taking my comment.
Thank you, Tamara.
Helen Moschak?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Dear City Council members, I'm speaking again tonight. I think I've spoken at every budget meeting because if this budget is approved, our city's equity, diversity, and inclusion efforts will continue to be at risk. We know from experience and research that EDI is good for communities and businesses, and that it involves an investment of time, resources, and systemic and cultural changes. Despite talking about prioritizing EDI, a yes vote by council on the city manager's 2025 budget will eliminate the EDI manager position, jeopardizing the progress we've made to date and seriously impacting future efforts. It's crucial that we continue to support our EDI program by, one, following the recommendations of the EDI task force; two, reinstating the EDI manager position in the 2025 budget amendment process next spring; three, allocating sufficient ongoing funding for the EDI program; four, creating a permanent EDI advisory board as recommended by the task force; and, five, hiring a new city manager with direct, real-life experience in implementing successful EDI initiatives so that she or he will support reinstating the EDI manager position and program budget. I understand it is challenging to balance a citywide budget on the order of $30 million, and a tremendous amount of work and time has gone into this budget over the past five months. It's not too late. We can live up to our EDI commitments and goals. I'm confident that with direction from council and collaboration with the new city manager and staff, the next version of the budget can include a budget amendment for the $117,000 necessary to reinstate the EDI manager position and support the creation of and funding of an EDI advisory board. We need to invest long-term in building a community where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. These efforts foster a sense of belonging, support our business community, reduce disparities, and create a vibrant, dynamic city, all the things we love about Louisville. Let's invest in EDI to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. No other, no other public comment? Okay. Discussion? Councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember Hefner?
Yeah, thank you. I don't have a whole lot to say, and, you know, we've talked about this quite a number of times now, but it's a, it's a good budget. It embodies a lot of our priorities. It embodies almost all of our priorities, including balancing difficult choices, and I think we just heard some difficult choices in the public comment. And, you know, I know we all wish to do more and to do more every year and to do better next year than we did the last year. This is a step in that direction. And I can't thank enough Director Bailey, City Manager Fox, the numerous, numerous, numerous others, including all of the department heads who worked on this. And it's a, you know, it's going to be a great year next year. That's all I have to say.
Thanks. Others on council? Comments? I have a couple of comments. One is that, as I had said several meetings ago, we have not eliminated the EDI manager position. We have not appropriated money for it in this round. And the decision that we'll make presumably in the spring is some discussion with the, we hope it's in the spring, with a new city manager about how to proceed. I think it's really important to recognize that, something that the city manager mentioned in one of the budget meetings, which is that there is a fairly sizable amount of money that is not designated simply as an EDI budget, but which funds different EDI actions throughout the city's work. So it's not quite accurate to say we're defunding DEI. That's just a misrepresentation of where we're at. I am very hopeful that we'll get to revisit this and we'll do a budget amendment when we have a good idea of how we want to allocate the funds, whether it's in the way we've done it in the past or in different ways. The second thing I want to say is that I appreciate our finance committee hugely in this process, which is led by Councilmember Hefner, who did a fabulous job this year, as well as Councilmember Hamilton and Councilmember Kern. They were involved in every single one of those meetings and finance committee meetings on top of that, so I really appreciate that. Staff did a monumental lift. I think of where we started with all the requests and the need to cut and cut and cut and to fit the budget priorities that we had and the budget limitations that we find ourselves facing. And so that is just, I don't think we can say thanks enough for that process. It's just, and I hope that all the directors will know that and everybody else who has been involved in that process, great work. I think the other, and I thank my fellow councilmembers because we've had robust discussions about these items, they've not been easy to manage or discuss, to discuss, to manage this year. I hope in future years, we're going to have greater revenue as we, I think, turn a corner going forward on business. I would say also, I want to sort of separate out for special recognition our city manager, who came in, in the middle of the cycle of doing this budget, which is a two-year budget, not a one-year budget, a two-year budget, first time for her, first time for our director as well, doing a two-year biennial budget, and had to get up to speed extraordinarily quickly. And I don't think we could have done this without you, and I don't think we could have done it without help for the finance department that we got. But for you, I really, my hat is off because I think that is a superlative amount of work, and I'm glad you were there to help us, and you did a great job. So, other comments? Yep?
I, you know, it's my plan to vote to approve this budget tonight, but I don't want that to be construed as me changing my opinion that, that we should have found money to fully fund the EDI manager position. I think it's a matter of semantics to say that we didn't. I mean, our interim city manager cannot hire EDI manager, and the next city manager cannot hire an EDI manager unless we do something different. So that position will never be filled unless we change. And so we have eliminated that position in all reasonable ways. So I disagree with that. I absolutely think we should have found money for that, and, but I understand we've already had that conversation, so I don't need people to restate their position unless there are three of you that, that agree with me. So I just, I want to restate that because I'm going to vote yes. I'm not going to have a protest vote of no. So just so that the six people who are listening, I'm on record as feeling that way. Thanks.
Oh, what's, is there a motion on Resolution Number 52?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Can we take a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Bierman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Okay, I would also move the passage of Resolution Number 53, series 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, can we take a roll call?
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bierman?
Yes.
And finally, I'd move passage of Resolution Number 54, series 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? None? Can we take a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bierman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Okay. Just take a moment to have complied with the constitutional requirement of the state of Colorado. It's always nice to have done that. Thank you very much to everybody. Our next item is discussion direction on city manager residency requirements. We start with, is there a staff presentation on this? Okay, well, I'll, I'll just kick it off. We are, as all at the dais now, and probably many of the folks who are still tuned in on Zoom now, in the middle of the search process, recruitment for, for a new city manager. And we have a terrific recruiter who's working with us, and there are already, as I understand it, 14 applications, and that's about a week in. The application period, I think, ends December 1st, so that's a, and as I understand it, some, some pretty interesting candidates, just generally from the description. But one of the things that the recruiter has said over and over to Judy and to me and to the staff who are working at this stage on it, is that there is a challenge, and it's that our charter in Louisville has a limitation that requires the city manager to, after, I think, well, I don't know the exact language, but to eventually live within the city limits of Louisville. Not necessarily to buy a house, but to live in a, within the city limits. And there are certainly good reasons for that. You probably understand those, but it's an idea of really having connection and, and starting to put down roots in, in the city and being close to the action, being close to the work, and being able to be visible on a short-term notice. But it's a, and it's a charter requirement. But what we have discussed with the recruiter is that this is going to be a challenge in, absent something we do, it's going to be a challenge in trying to, to seek the broadest group of potential applicants because it is, one, expensive to live in Louisville, and, two, to some degree, if, if folks are in the, or if the candidate is in Louisville, or, excuse me, in... or excuse me, in the area but not in Lewisville, they may have kids in schools nearby, there may be some concerns about the kinds of hard choices that we may force somebody into based on the particular timing of our requirement. So I think what we're really looking to do tonight is to have a bit of a discussion about some of those, some of the options that we might consider as a way to accommodate somewhat this concern and potential applicants being required to be here immediately after being selected, and whether there are other options for managing that. And those options might be that compliance with this requirement could be after a certain period of time, that we think our understanding is that that's consistent with the length of time. It's hard to know, but there may be a way to accommodate it by not requiring the city manager immediately move within the city limits, still respect the charter. Another is, you know, trying to at least perhaps set a radius or a kind of period of time within which a person needs to be able to be to Lewisville. We know that without a charter election, we can't completely eliminate the requirement. But I'm, I think that kind of lays out at least a bit of the geography. Staff have any addition to make to that?
So the charter does say you have, the city council can set the time in which the new manager has to move to town. So that can be five minutes or five years. It's up to you guys what you think would be most politically astute. So that's up to you. Or you could refer, as you noted, refer a ballot measure to the residents to make a decision on that.
Good. When was the last charter election?
2009.
Very good. Yes.
I would just follow up by saying that the exact language of the charter is in your council communication, if you're interested in referring to it.
Okay. So thoughts, questions, concerns?
So just to kind of let all of you know too, what we've heard from the recruiter is that although there is some interest from potentially people who are within the state, there are people outside as well. I think it sounds like if we're interested in kind of opening it up locally, let's say we have somebody who currently resides in Erie, and they're interested in being the city manager here, you know, do we want to put the restriction and say, well, get that house on the market, start looking in Lewisville? Or do we want to say, wow, you are really, you know, the most incredible person for the position in Lewisville, and give them that opportunity? I think another idea might be, instead of just giving somebody time to say, oh, you live in Colorado Springs, and you're just going to commute here, I think I would lean towards saying, even if we're going to give somebody a year, maybe longer, a year and a half to figure out how to relocate to Lewisville, that they still need to live even in the short term, within maybe like a half an hour, 40 minutes or so of the city. I just, I think asking somebody to say, oh, you can commute to Lewisville, you know, from an hour plus away is a disservice to the rest of staff and the residents.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, that's an interesting point. Because, you know, I think the idea is we should, you know, go to a charter amendment eventually to try to, you know, really put a better, you know, handle on what it is we want if we want something different. And then there you could spell out all those things. But in the interim, if all you say is, okay, well, you don't have to live here for the first five years, sort of, you know, wink, wink, while we work on our charter amendment. So it just kind of gives you, you know, enough time for us to do our work. But then, then they could live in Florida. So, you know, it's, are we, you know, able in the interview process, you know, to understand, you know, because again, if, I mean, if we're, we have to be careful in the way we do that, because then, you know, someone we select who, again, I'm not, I could be exaggerating, but lives in Florida and doesn't want to move here, we just said, oh, we put no, we just said you don't have to move here for five years, here being like the city of Lewisville. But if you don't have to move to the city of Lewisville, they could live anywhere. So that, I hadn't thought of that. I was thinking, you know, more along the lines of, yeah, someone's either going to, they're going to move here, and they're going to maybe move, you know, to a neighboring city, or they already live here, but it's close enough. But again, if someone lives in Durango, and we put no geographical, you know, so I don't know, maybe this is to you, City Attorney, if we can say, you know, I mean, we could grant temporary things here, but, but again, we don't, we don't know who this human is that we're hiring. And so we don't know their living situation, where they're coming from. So my question would be, you know, I clicked off the wrong thing, sorry. You know, this language says, "The city manager shall become a resident of the city within the time established by the council and shall remain a resident throughout the manager's appointment." So we cannot change that language because that's in the charter. We can change the amount of time, we can set the amount of time, but we can do nothing about proximity to the city, or living within the state, or, or requiring in-office attendance? Is that part of their, is there another piece that, I'm just trying to get through this, that like, they have to, they have to be present to do their jobs? So is there protection for us?
Right. So a couple of questions rolled up.
Yeah, sorry.
There. In terms of establishing additional terms and conditions for the position, you can do that in the employment agreement. You know, if, for instance, the interim city manager agreement requires in-person work. There's no remote work during the city's business hours. You know, I think if you have a candidate who lives out of state, that might be a situation that you weigh whether that's the appropriate candidate, if they're not even going to move to the state of Colorado to take the job.
Right. I just don't know how much of that we can, like, but I'm hearing very clearly, in their contract, we can state they must have an in-office presence. Now you know they're close enough that they can be in the office every day until then, right? So so within the contract, we can be more, so I'm comfortable and I appreciate the thought process that that does.
And I would just follow up and say, you know, the charter is the minimum of what you need to require from this applicant. What you negotiate by contract with your selected candidate is up to you and the candidate, and if you can come to agreement on terms.
As long as it's consistent with, with the charter, which is broader. We can't, we can't agree, obviously, to legislate out.
Right. And that's, yeah, I think I said that, but.
Right.
Mayor, one thing I would add to is that you are working with a recruiter, and she is speaking to all the applicants. And, you know, the committee you've appointed, you and Judy can tell the recruiter some parameters, what you think she wants. She should be asking them these questions. So when are you planning on moving? How, you know, those types of things. So I think she's doing it already, but you could make that very clear with her.
I mean, and all of the candidates will probably watch this discussion, because that's what candidates do on this kind of thing. But absolutely, that's why we're trying to get a good, good handle on what our concerns are.
Yeah, I just think, you know, we don't, in this case, we don't want to restrict applicants. I mean, I think we need to get the best and biggest pool. But I agree, we should have some radius or, you know, in-person, you know, some requirement to the Florida comment, right? We don't want them in Florida, Wyoming even, you know, they've got to sort of be responsive. But I just think to put that restriction on having to live in Lewisville will lose out on a lot of good applicants. So I think we're moving that hurdle, but putting some parameters around a radius or commute time or whatever, or in-person with the contract, I think that's necessary.
Yes, Councilmember Hamilton.
I have a question. I'm not quite clear yet on our ability to put in a radius or commute time parameter outside of in-office attendance. Is that a possibility here?
So the charter only requires that you set a time period for the manager to become a resident of the city. And then after they become a resident, they need to remain a resident throughout their tenure as your city manager. I think that, looking beyond that, those are all subject to negotiation with your appropriate candidate. You know, I guess my two cents is I would discourage you from setting a strict boundary, because what if your ideal candidate lives just on the other side of that strict boundary? Like, I think you don't know what your pool is going to look like. And so to set that now might do you a disservice.
Okay, that's very helpful. So with that being said, I mean, we do need, frankly, an extraordinary candidate to do some really ambitious work here in our city. And I think this is an antiquated requirement, honestly, that we need to get to the voters. For now, I think in order to attract the best applicant pool, we do need to figure out how we can work within the confines of the current charter to attract the pool.
Yeah, we, yeah, Councilmember Hefner.
Yeah, I was just going to voice support with what I think Judy's approach was, which is, you know, we should indicate some willingness to work with folks, make sure they understand this is primarily an in-office job. I mean, there are times, I'm sure, where the city manager needs to work from other locations, but this is primarily an in-person job. And, you know, we're hiring somebody who's expected to be a professional and operate at a pretty high professional level. And if they know it's an in-person job, they can figure out what the, you know, most people aren't going to live in Cheyenne and try and commute to Lewisville, right? Like, it just doesn't work. And so whoever we pick, I would hope they have the level of judgment to understand where and where not reasonable places to live are for a job in Lewisville. And vis-à-vis the charter requirement, I mean, I think we should indicate we're going to work with, work with folks. We'll push it out, you know, as far as need be to reach a solution that, you know, allows us to get the candidate we want.
Yeah. In many ways, we don't need to, we don't need to reach a decision on that time period, or response time, radius, however you want to think of it. Arguably, you could do that. You could do the latter at the time you're negotiating. I mean, there may be a, there may be a reason to wait until, and I think the issue that's more important is the charter issue. And I think maybe what I would suggest, and thumbs up, thumbs down, or another proposal, would be to say that within several years, we would expect, you know, we're, we're going to, we're going to try to accommodate a person's circumstances as consistently as we can with, with the charter, but we're going to try to find some way to, to not make that the reason, to make that not the reason that they decline the position. You know, if we want you, we want you. And if you're not able to live within the city limits of Lewisville, we're going to, we'll work with you. I mean, I, at least for a period of time. And I think that gives us a chance to decide whether we want to take it to the voters, which frankly, I, I'm not sure I'd want a charter election just on that one thing. But I think there are several things that may well be appropriate for it. I just don't want to discourage people. But other thoughts?
I like your approach. And I will just say, I mean, to me, it is a plus if whoever it is lives here. I mean, I think it's a good thing. But recognizing that we don't live in a perfect world, and this is an expensive place to live, and all the other things that we talked about, you know, I think we should be flexible, whatever. You know, you want the person in charge to feel, to live with the impact of their decisions and the things that we're doing here. And it's an important job, and it's an important job to people who live here and count on us. And so to the extent we can get somebody who is willing to relocate here, I mean, I think that's a, it's a big plus in my book.
Yeah. It's really the opposite situation, where gee, they're a good candidate, but they can't. That, we don't want to necessarily hold that against them, try to be as flexible as we can. And that's what she needs. This, from my understanding, that's the kind of affirmation. And if we were to say, nope, person's got to be there every day and has to live, yeah, we'll give them six months to buy a house, or, you know, rent an apartment or whatever. I think that's the kind, you know, she's looking for us to give a signal one way or the other. Okay. I think we, yes, Councilmember Fahy.
I just want to say that there are, in some ways, advantages to having a city manager who does not live in the city, because they don't have the, you know, the neighbors coming over and telling them, well, you should do this, or, or them telling residents things that maybe shouldn't be told.
Yeah.
So if they're just close enough to commute in, I think that is good enough for me.
Yep.
Do we need to?
Need to take public comment?
We do.
Hello, Mark Cathcart. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I think that was a very good discussion. My name is Mark Cathcart. I live in Lewisville. That was a very good discussion. You, you know, you've been rounded out on most of the points in terms of remote employees. I would have two observations for you, as someone that has both lived a long way from where they work and commuted, and two recent news. The council, hopefully some of you will have noted, that the chief of police for RTD commuted from Colorado Springs to Denver, and is reported by CPR News to have driven over 100 miles an hour, you know, on multiple occasions, and was recently let go. You simply don't want to hire someone that is, you know, going to have to do that sort of thing to get to work when they're urgently needed. I mean, without commenting further on that specific case, you just don't want to. So that is an ideal discussion for the interview stage. And then the second one is someone that drove regularly 64 miles to work and 64 miles home in the UK. It is just soul destroying. So, you know, again, in an interview process, you know, it's reasonable for those that are involved in the interview to ask the candidate, have they really considered what the implications of that are? So there's two things in relation to the commute, certainly since we don't have an alternative at all, right? You can't get to Lewisville by train. So driving is it, apart from if they live really close, then they can cycle. So I think you had a good discussion. I'd like to congratulate on that. And I would certainly support the council pushing this to the interview process and trying to get the best candidates, and then working on a solution if they don't currently work in, if they don't currently live in Lewisville. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Those are good comments and a colorful example. Other comments? Okay. I think we have, yeah.
Yes. Do we need to set an amount of time, or we're good? Okay. I just want to make sure we've done what we need.
No, not, not right now. I mean, this issue could come up again, and we'll probably have to deal with it more specifically. But I think we have a good sense of where, where you want us to go. But I think we have a good sense of where, where you want us to go in the discussion. I'll check, looks like staff is nodding, and Councilmember Kern is as well. So, good, thank you, appreciate that. City attorney's report?
No report this evening, thank you.
Okay. Identification of future agenda items. Okay, saying none? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Before that, I would like to thank Councilmember Tim Bierman for your service. Appreciate you stepping up and filling Chris's seat and being my award-winning teammate for a year, and congratulations on your new job. And, and yeah, I mean, I, I know it's only a year, but I know that now, for the rest of your life, you'll know what it's like to be a council member and know what it's like to set up here and be a part of the community in that way. And so, thank you for giving your time and your energy to, to us. And I know tomorrow's election that you won't win. You're not going to win tomorrow. So, this will be our last meeting with you, and I appreciate your service.
Yeah, thank you. It's been great, you know, working with you all and staff. And I've learned a lot, and it hasn't even been a year, although it feels like that. It's sort of like, but it's been great, so thank you for that. And, you know, I, you know, hope that you will continue the momentum to make this a wonderful town to live in, to do business in, and all that. So, but I'm proud of what we've done collectively as a body. And I, you know, proud that I played a small part in that, even for, you know, a short amount of time. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim, from all of us. And thanks, Mayor Protem, for pointing it out. And you are welcome to begin with us on the 19th, if you so choose. But appreciate that. I guess the only thing I'll sneak in after that is, if anybody's still with us, not many are with us, they're probably all people who've voted already. But if somebody's by chance on, not voted yet, make sure you drop your ballot tomorrow. All right, motion to amend, or motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, Tim.